I don't know. Something about the landfill, I don't know, but it didn't last long, a couple of years. It wouldn't take it if it wasn't in, or you could go buy a permit to get a, use a, like, a big sheet bags and stuff.
The time is four thirty P M. The City of Pelican Rapids Council meeting of thirty March twenty twenty-one is called to order. I ask at this time those in the audience that have not signed in on the clipboard, if you would please do so before you leave this evening, and all those in the council chambers would put their cell phones on vibrate. A roll call of members. Daniel?
Councilmember Steve Strand.
Here.
Councilmember Kevin Balling.
Here.
Councilmember Michael.
Here.
Councilmember Steve Foster.
Here.
And Mayor Brent Frazier.
Here. Want to welcome each and every one of you here this evening in the council chambers, those that are joining us by Zoom, and also those that'll be watching us on channel fourteen on Wednesday evening. A few announcements for the next couple of weeks. This afternoon, there was a send-off for the Pelican Rapids Blue Vikings basketball team as they play Albany tonight at seven thirty in Pequot Lakes. Tomorrow, Wednesday, thirty-first of March, from ten to eleven, conversations with the mayor to historic City Hall. Also, Thursday, April first, two to three P M. is City of Pelican Rapids Council Board of Appeal and Equalization meeting here at City Hall. Thursday, April eighth, five thirty P M. is the twenty twenty-four Pelican Rapids Complete Streets Public Input Meeting by a Microsoft team that evening. Monday, April twelfth, at five P M. is the next Planning Commission meeting here at City Hall. And also on Tuesday, April thirteenth, four thirty P M. is the next City Council meeting. Any other announcements? Any other announcements?
Can you give the date of that D O T. meeting again?
April eighth, five thirty P M. Any other announcements? Hearing none, if we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is citizens' comments. Anyone here for citizens' comments? I don't remember. Three is additions or deletions to the agenda. I have one addition. Item number sixteen is local Board of Appeals and Equalization meeting. Item number sixteen is local Board of Appeals and Equalization meeting. Any other announcements or deletions?
Move the agenda with the addition.
A side.
Motion second. Discussion. 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in the same. Motion carried. Item number four, approval of consent agenda, which I will read. Item number four A. is approval of council meetings minutes from March ninth twenty twenty-one. Four B. is approval accounts payable listing. Four C. one is liquor store report. Four C. two is utilities report. Both those reports are in your package. Does your motion go through?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in the same. Motion carried. Item number five, Sunday Soccer League. We have Mr. Rudy Martinez here this evening with us. He has some information he would like to share with us. Rudy?
Thank you for having me today. Again, my name is Rudy Martinez. I am a community member. Grew up in Pelican Rapids, moved to the cities, and eventually came back. Passion for soccer continued developing our community at a bigger level, making sure that all of our cultures are represented fairly and equitable. One of the projects that upon moving back, we wanted to do very clearly on is continue to infuse soccer as part of an identity development for our kids, making sure that a lot of our kids have self-identity, and the means for that is soccer. The Sunday Soccer League has long-standing. It's been over about fifteen years that we started the league, and it's gone through many different hands. One of the things that we wanted to do very early on is to have the Sunday Soccer League as part of the nonprofit organization, which we represent and are part of the board, which is Prusa. The best thing about it is we want to invest. We want to invest in our community. We want to invest in our kids. But in order to do so, we needed to show different avenues, different platforms, on how we're doing so. What I'll walk through that Mr. Solga is going to show you guys, this is a website that we've created to represent who we are as a nonprofit organization. All the development work and all of the logos have been created by us. And this is going to be one of the things that we're going to blast all over social media, so people get to know a little bit more of who we are as a community, as an organization, and some of the benefits and outreach programs that we have and that we provide. So the website, we're finalizing the domain name, and eventually it's just going to be w dot prusa organization dot org. But this is the template that we're finalizing. One of the things that we wanted to do is we wanted to provide access to everyone. Because of COVID, last year, we were not able to operate the Sunday Soccer League, and we had a lot of, we have a lot of issues trying to reach people through the pandemic. So one of the things that we did very early on is we needed to have a come-to spot. And nowadays, that is on the web. So what we did is, on the, on the website, we have actually an online registration form that we manage, and it gives us reports, statistics, and everything. And I'll walk you guys through it, but essentially, Prusa, I'll give you guys the overview. Prusa's a nonprofit organization. Mr. Solga, if you can scroll down, please.
I'll give you the mouse. You can just set it on there and move around on there.
So Prusa is a nonprofit organization. That is our shield and our logo. You'll find it throughout the event on Sunday Soccer League. There is three, three main people in the committee for the Sunday Soccer League that I'll introduce to you guys in addition to myself. And one of the things that we wanted to do very early on is we wanted to provide that community family feel to the Sunday Soccer League, because we want to start merging and infusing people of different backgrounds that traditionally play soccer in Pelican Rapids. In order to do so, we know that we needed to introduce a face-friendly environment. And we did that by selecting people that are pillars in the community and have families in the community, and we know that they have kids in the community, so their investment for them is long-term. We have Nobe Villagomez, who's the director for the Sunday Soccer League. We have Danny Franco. We have Mayo Vernal, and then myself, Rudy Martinez. As you can see, all of us have roots here in Pelican Rapids, and you guys can connect us. I can send you the domain link for the, for the website. So this is who we are. This is the committee that's going to operate the Sunday Soccer League. Under the, if we go in terms of a hierarchy upwards, then everything is housed under Prusa. So this is one of the branches. To better show you guys who we are, we'll go through the main homepage. We added this welcome logo, because we thought it represented us significantly in terms of who we are as a community with many different languages spoken. So that's what we have. It's such a popular logo that I believe now the Viking Elementary School also wants to introduce it in front of their building. This is who we are. Prusa, we exist to support the community, youth, and our school. Through soccer, we exist to promote youth soccer and provide programs for kids in our community. Three of the branches that we focus on is we partner up with the school to provide summer rec activities. That is going to be managed by Coach John Peter. I will be assisting, and then we hire a lot of our kids that want to help the kids during summer rec. But that's what we do. In order for any sports program to be successful, you have to start at grassroots and then grow the kids from very early on, so when they get to be in high school, their main sport is soccer. So again, we provide summer rec, so we can get an inflow of kids interested and continue to play soccer. Other things that we do is we provide, we partner up with the school, and then we provide equal access to both boys and girls soccer teams, and we help them develop, we provide a lot of development clinics, one-on-ones. If a kid says, hey, I want to be a better defender, Rudy, what do I do? We set up drills with them at no cost. Then, this year, we introduced the Sunday Soccer League. The Sunday Soccer League is what we'll be operating. It's brand-new. It's why we came to you guys last year to give us your blessing and your approval, so that we can operate within city limits, specifically at Brown Soccer Field. And towards the end of my presentation, I'll ask for the same support from you guys. We did present to the Parks and Board yesterday, and they gave us their approval and their thumbs up. So we have their letter of recommendation, and we hope that you guys also support us at the end of this presentation. One of the cool things that we're doing through Prusa this year is Coach John Peter is creating a documentary that is six episodes long, that talks about the history and development of soccer in Pelican Rapids, and why is it so important to our identity and to our community. I'll show you guys a quick video clip that he is making, and again, all the content, all the music, all the footage is developed and created by us. So that is what we're working on. Again, one of the things that was very apparent to us very early on is people said, hey, we don't know nothing about soccer. So one of the part of this documentary is going to help introduce the history of that. Every weekend after each Sunday after games are played, we're going to be uploading pictures, introducing players, introducing teams. And what that will look like is we have a page for all of the teams that are registered to go on. Again, one of the benefits that we are doing is we're providing customized logos. So any team that registers, we go through a web design, and then we create a logo for them. In addition to any, at the, at the entrance to Brown Soccer Field, there'll be Q R. codes that will create, that every Sunday you walk in, you take a picture with your phone, it's going to route you here, so people are going to be able to see live scores. They're going to be able to see who scored. And if somebody has a name about who is the people playing, which teams are playing, they're going to guide you right here. And again, we're trying to be as mobile as possible for those people that can't make it to the field, and for those that are there. It'll just be a nice added feature that we'll provide. So for example, here's just an example of what a team will look like. The captain or coach of our team is Mayo Vernal. The players, again, we're customizing all the shields, so people get to know them a little bit. You go from who they are, their name, their nationality. This is eventually going to be the jersey player, so people can say, oh, you know what? Mayo is number ninety. You'll be able to identify him in the field. And then again, some of the colors. One of the things about the Sunday Soccer League is people like to name themselves after professional soccer teams. So for us, this year, we're wearing the jersey of Borussia Dortmund, which is a German, German team that plays in the Bundesliga. They have some of the best soccer players right now. So we're, you know, we, we want to take after them. Again, we talked about infusing many different cultures, and it's beautiful to see that just in our particular team, we have a people of Mexican origin, people from El Salvador, and then one, a gentleman from Jamaica, and another one from Cuba. That is five nationalities in just one team. As we start to get more teams from outside, whether it's Perum or Fargo, those nationalities are going to continue to be represented. But then again, if somebody scans that Q R. code, or you're just interested about a player, you'll be able to click on the player, read about them. You know, you're going to be able to see their specific, specific player statistics. And again, all that work, all the custom shields that you guys see, that's what we're creating. We wanted to give it a professional feel and look, so players are excited to play on it, and the community can actually look at, look at something that is very nice, well, and laid out for everyone. So that's who we are, that's what we have in terms of teams. We also have the season calendar, so anybody that wants to know where we are at, at any point in the season, you'll be able to see the season calendar, and it'll take you live. And we have all the games scheduled already on a week-by-week basis, and you can click at the event, sync it to your phone, or you can get directions to go to David Brown Soccer Field. If there is any events that need to be changed because of weather, because a holiday or whatever it is, this is going to be the landing page where we make announcements if anything gets rescheduled. So this is what we have, again, for calendars. For you guys to know is our season is going to run from May ninth, which is Sunday Mother's Day, and it's going to go all the way till August fifteenth, which is the last Sunday before high school soccer starts. And we very strategically did that, giving us about two weekends, in case there are the field floods, or we need to give the field a rest, or we have to switch to a different method. So we have two weekends that we can potentially shift because of bad weather or whatnot. That's our schedule. The other thing that people told us very early on is they wanted to follow statistics or league standings and fixtures. So at the end of every Sunday, people are going to see where they rank based on the points they accumulate of wins and losses. And again, this is live. So as a team, as soon, as soon as a match finalizes and then the scores get confirmed, this will automatically update. People are going to be able to see who's ranked at the top, who's ranked at the bottom. In terms of the structure of our league, we are allowing twelve teams. Each team can have fifteen players. And it's a condensed version of soccer, normally traditional soccer. You play eleven on eleven, and it's forty-five-minute halves. Because of, because of the time and how many people it takes to operate it, we play a short version of it, which is more, more of a Brazilian style, which is called futsal. And we play seven on seven instead of eleven on eleven. And then we shorten the halves to twenty-five minutes each. That gives us enough time, very strategically, to hire refs at a cheaper price. So that's, that's the structure of the game. We follow all the rules and regulations that FIFA does, but there are very unique, extrinsic rules and regulations that apply to this league, which we're still finalizing. One of the things that we're going to be very, very blunt about when it comes to managing the league is we're going to have a zero tolerance policy, which means that at any point in time, if a player gets out of hand, we're going to support the referees to exercise their right to give, give that player a penalty. And in soccer, you penalize the players by giving them a yellow card or a red card. So why are we doing this? We're doing this so we can get families here. One of the big complaints that we've had from family members is a lot of the times, language gets a little bit carried away. People are competitive. We understand that. But sometimes, their, their ego or their passion for the sport gets the better of them, and we're trying to tone that down, because we understand that families go there, kids go there, and we're trying to make it a, a clean environment for everyone to go and enjoy an evening of soccer. The other thing is, unfortunately, the Sunday Soccer League has gotten the reputation for sometimes having some fights, and that is the reason why we're going in with a zero tolerance policy. At any point in time, if anybody becomes physical, we will automatically eject that player, and if things do not get resolved, the whole team will be disqualified from the tournament. Again, zero tolerance policy. We want to make it as safe and as clean as possible. We encourage competitiveness. We encourage people to play tough, but we don't want anybody to get hurt. Same thing for games every, every week. You'll be able to see in which week we are and which team plays what. And again, all of that will be scanned to the Q R. code. That's what we And then we went through the contact test, and then again, the final thing is just the rules and regulations, which we're still finalizing as a committee, that will then be presented here. So I threw a lot of information at you guys, so I'm going to stop and entertain questions, or you guys want me to be more specific on certain things. I'll keep you guys this time, please.
Any questions for Rudy?
How many teams will be from Pelican?
So far, we have eight teams that are going to be from Pelican.
Will those teams play each other? I mean, are you just playing people from other towns?
We, we play each other. So anybody can create a team, as long as you can come up with fifteen players. Actually, if you come up with seven players, you can participate. And, and what we are doing is, because we want to own the league, because we wanted to make it a community feel, we're giving priority to local teams. And that's what we do. So in the event that we have fifteen teams that register, and we're only allowing twelve spot, we're going to look at which team is local, or which team has local players in, and then we'll give that team priority. Why we're doing that? Again, because it's a community league. We'd rather entertain the people that live here and, 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 and provide, provide their services to us here than, than to have somebody from Fargo come and play. So, so know that. Twelve teams, maximum of fifteen players per team.
So then what other teams or what other towns will be participating in this? Would be like Perum or what?
Yep. So the other towns that come and play is Perum, traditionally has one team. We've heard rumors that they might potentially have two teams this year. Fergus Falls always has a team, and that dates back to the relationship that we have with Hillcrest Academy when Pelican Rapids play soccer for them. A lot of them are longtime friends and relationships that we've, we've nurtured since then, and they continue to be here, and they continue to be friends of ours, so they like to be competitive as well. And then we have, and then we've had up to four teams from Fargo register other years. So again, we're, we're at a point where we've also had some requests for people to ask us to make the league with more teams, and we don't want to do that, because the season will carry over into, into high school soccer, and a lot of us don't have the time to invest that. The other thing that we want to be very good about is we want to show transparency. People have always talked about where the money goes for the Sunday Soccer League. So that is why Prusa took that over, is we actually have an accountant, myself, that are going to be doing all the financials for it. We're going to provide weekly, weekly expense reports so people know where the money goes, where the money comes in. And at the end of the year, the committee of the four guys that run, run the Sunday Soccer League will pass a vote if we have any, any funds reserved to either donate them to scholarships, or then donate them to a project that is going on that year for the soccer field. Again, the big thing is we want to invest in Brown Soccer Field. So we have a vision plan for it, and we need the numbers, and we need the statistics, so when we go for big donors, we can show them who we are and why soccer is so important to us, and why we want to invest in, in Brown Soccer Field.
Rudy, I know in the past it's been difficult sometimes to find referees. How does that look in the future?
Very promising. Two, two, two points to that. One, when we contacted the referees that normally come from Fargo, they were excited to know that we're structured. We have rules and regulations, so they're actually going to have a dedicated reserve booth, and there's going to be directors from the league there to support them every single weekend. So they were ecstatic. We know that in our region, news travel by mouth faster, so they're going to reach out to peers that, that also referee, and hopefully, we can get more people, and then eventually get people to, to bring those fees down. Second part, one of the goals of the organization, Prusa, is to develop kids that have an interest for referee, and one of the things that we're doing as an organization is we're paying for them to go and be certified soccer referees. In our area, we always have a shortage of referees, so we want to invest in kids that are juniors or graduating seniors, so they can, eventually, we're going to grow our own referees. It's going to take a couple of years, but that's our vision. Also, these kids that get certified to be soccer referees, they can do that as a hobby during college to make some money. So, so that's one of the things that we do. So yeah, we, we've thought of all those strategies on how we can grow our own programs. Great question.
You came here this evening looking for our support. What does that entail?
Yep. So if you guys can just give us your support to tell us that the Sunday Soccer League is okay to operate between May ninth to August fifteenth, within city limits at Brown Soccer Field, we'll really appreciate it.
I'll make that motion, and we'll let them grow from May ninth to August fifteenth.
Motion second. Discussion. 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in the same. Mr. Pats, thank you, Rudy.
You're very kind.
Let's jump down to item number eight, police personnel. We have Chief Jeff Staden with us here this evening.
Good evening, councilman and mayor. We did some interviews for police jobs in Pelican Rapids full-time. We did some interviews, and now we're to the point of, we need to make a couple of decisions here, and we have two gentlemen that we'd like to hire full-time, and that would be at the pay of twenty ninety-six. Then, one name is John Strand, and the other is Patrick Johnson.
Any questions for the chief?
And these are both full-time, you said?
Do we know John Strand?
Yes, we do. Yes, we sure do. Yep. Yep.
Are they both new officers, or were they coming from somewhere else?
Go ahead. I will to hire John Patrick.
Second. Hey, we have a motion in a second to hire John Strand, Patrick Johnson, at twenty ninety-six Discussion?
Contingent on the background, I guess. Sorry. I should say contingent on the background. I should, forgot to say that. Yes.
Discussion?
How will that fill up our police force?
A lot. It'll give us, yeah, it'll, it'll give us four full-time, and things. We're, we still have two part-timers.
You're still looking for a part-time, or not?
Probably not right now. We'll get these two going, and then we'll kind of work from there. Don't have too many, on the F T O, we got enough things going, so. But yeah, we'll probably look for some part-time out later on, yes.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in the same. Motion carried. Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much, councilman and mayor. Thanks.
Item number nine is street park personnel. We have Superintendent Ryan Olson with us this evening.
Yes, thank you. What I'm looking for is, is permission to hire somewhat of a new position. With, with the scenario I'm in right now, with one full-time down, I'd like to hire a seasonal maintenance position for streets and parks. And that, like I say, it's new. That's why we had to come, I needed to come and talk to you about it, get your approval for that. And this would be a, a May through October position, full-time seasonal, Yes.
So is that the mowing position also?
No, I'm currently advertising for the mowing position, and also for the pool manager job, are currently. This is, this is a new position that will fill the fourth full-time person that I have in the city, in our full-time staff, temporarily, until that person can hopefully come back soon, and then this person will be done in Aga, or October then.
Do you have a rate of pay for that?
It starts at seventeen dollars and seventeen cents, and we'll advertise it for two weeks, and then I'll come back with a hire, hopefully, at the next council meeting, so.
Do you advertise, man?
Excuse me?
How do you advertise?
In the press, and then on social media. Facebook, our Facebook page gets, and then our, our city website also.
Yeah, I was pushing for bilingual last time we hired, and I'm, you know.
Yeah, I was pushing for bilingual last time we hired and I'm, you know, I would really like to see that.
Yeah, I, I have no, no qualms with that. It's who applies. I need that person to apply. So.
Yeah, but I think it would be helpful in your description.
I don't know what that, we'll look at that, Steve. I'm not sure how we'll, we'll get that.
Well, Rudy can help me.
Okay.
Anyone want to entertain a motion to approve?
I'm going to approve the hiring of a full-time seasonal maintenance position at $17.17 an hour.
I'll second.
Motion second. Discussion. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was it saying?
Okay, thank you.
That's it?
That's all I had for you. Yep. Nice and quick tonight.
Okay, we'll jump up to item number six is MINDOT 2024 project design option update. And we have Tom Pace joining us, Microsoft Team Technology this evening. Tom is District Four Project Manager Detroit Lakes. And I'll turn it over to Tom and he can introduce the staff that are with him this evening. Tom, are you there?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hopefully you can hear me okay.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, I'm sitting up here in my garage up in the great north Detroit Lakes. I'm wishing I could be down there, but with our COVID protocols, we're still, still be virtual for a while yet. Anyway, like Mr. Mayor said, I've not been down to the city council for a while, so you have not been down our, our project. But we call the Pelican Rapids Complete Streets Project. I know a few of the members of the city council have been attending our monthly PMPs, which have been going really well. We've been, like I say, we meet monthly with our design team and, and our MINDOT staff. People follow the state that needed to walk through project issues and meet the project ruling. As you know, this project is a 2024 job. It's way in reality, that's coming up pretty fast. Lots of things to iron out. We thought, you know, next week, we're having our first, I would say, public meeting with virtually in terms of COVID. So we thought we maybe come to the city council here and just kind of give a, a pretty high-level look at our presentation that we'll give next week. And so you guys can look at it, give us any inputs we have, any questions we have. You know, as part of this project, we want to make sure we're with the city council and as our, as our partner on this project. So a lot of things we do, we want to make sure we're on the same page. So, and most, I will give you guys a personal look at everything that we present to the public. That way that we can, again, make sure we're working together on this. With me tonight and sitting in this room, this office, is Travis Weaver. He is worked for KLJ. KLJ was hired by MINDOT as our, our lead design team to help work with MINDOT and the city on this project. So I'm going to hand over to Travis. We'll do a lot of the presentation this evening.
Right. Thank you, Tom. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Tonight, if I can share my screen, oh, I think I might need to be enabled here. Oh, there we go. All right. I'm going to give a very high-level overview of what we plan on presenting on April 8th. So as Tom said, we'll have a virtual public open house. And what that will entail is we've got a presentation put together with a lot of the project details as we have them to date. And so we've got probably somewhere between we'll be giving to the public. Certainly won't do that tonight. Order of time. This is a lot of the information that you've seen. I know we presented whether it was a couple of months ago, kind of going through the details at, at a level, kind of describing the proposed improvements, getting your feedback. And so now we've put a little bit more of the engineering detail to it, a little bit more artwork, but also kind of wanted to give you an idea of what we're going to be presenting to the public here coming up next week. So we do have a presentation. I'm going to kind of fly through it. Feel free to stop me, but I won't be going into depth. They're certainly presenting in the same manner, but just want to give you an idea of what the premise of the public open house will be. And so, you know, starting out, when we have the meeting, we'll give a project overview describing what the project entails that's tied to the city utility replacements, got head and bike improvements that are planned as well, you know, the modifications that can be expected. Just a very high-level overview is out, which is to inform the public about the project. We want to collect their feedback and then at the end of it, answer their questions. And we want to reiterate that at this point, we're very early in project development. So we don't have all the answers, things like detour routes or exact access points, all of those things yet. And we'll reiterate that by probably going through the overall project schedule, describing kind of the work that was done in 2019 with the concept study that was led by partnership with Health, describe where we are right now, which is at the public open house in April of 2021. So we're kind of right in the middle of what we call our environmental and preliminary design phase. And so in 2020, we did a lot of data collection, surveys, studies, things like that. You know, a lot of the PMT meetings, stakeholder engagement that have led to, you know, where we're at with a preliminary concept and a layout that we plan on presenting to the public next week, which will then lead to the next steps municipal consent, which will then be, of course, another opportunity for the public to see kind of what the final product will be, how the layout entails as part of that process, which then we step into final design. And certainly, at least one more public open houses, we get towards the end to talk about what they can expect from the upcoming, you know, construction season or seasons, as it were. I'll serve that. Any questions so far?
Travis?
Yes.
Brad Fraser. Do you know how long the public meeting is going to last that evening? In case someone asks us how much time they should have?
You know, typically at a public meeting, when we used to be able to do it in person, we'd allocate about two hours. We'd have probably about a 30-minute presentation. And then it was nice because we could stand around tables with big robots and talk to people. They could ask questions. This will be a little bit different. I anticipate that I've probably got close to a 45-minute presentation because it's a big project. There's a lot to get through. And then we're going to open it up to questions. We got to figure out exactly how that will entail, entail so it can be kind of organized. But, and I will have the ability to go back on any slide they want or kind of the Google Earth layouts that maybe we've seen before that, that show, you know, the public, you know, if they want to zoom to a specific area, we can show them what the configuration might be. So we've got a couple of tools that we can do there, but really, it just depends on how many people, you know, show up and attend and then how many questions there are. But typically, I would say anywhere between an hour and a half and two hours, Tom. I don't know if you've got a better guess, guess than that?
Yeah, I'd definitely agree with Travis. You know, I anticipate hour and a half to two hours, you know, like Travis said, a bit virtually is a little bit different. But we've had pretty a lot recently for these open houses. There's a lot of people have been tuning into them, you know, from all over the council. Might go off there. Might go three hours, who knows? Might go until Friday.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So after kind of getting the premise of what the meeting's about and just an overview of the project, the way I've got it broken down was similar to probably what elements of the corridor, whether on 59 or 108. And so we kind of stepped through, starting from the north, working to the south. And the premise is that I kind of described about the existing conditions, what we're looking at, if there's issues with it, what they see today, and then talk about what we're proposing for improvements. And again, I won't go into a lot of details unless you have questions certainly, but talking about what we're proposing, what we want feedback on, you know, for the different things. This is the example of what is proposed at Cassinai, north of town. And then as we get through, you know, again, this is broken up kind of in, I'd say, three, four, five block segments that have kind of a little bit different characteristic. So just as an example, again, you know, we start in the north end, working south. This is in front of West Central, and talk about what we're dealing with there. There's no head facilities, you know, we've got wide lanes, kind of restricted parking, but this is where the section begins. And then we'll talk about what the proposed improvements are. What we've talked about to date is looking at a three-lane section that has the center left turn lanes, probably having dedicated left turns where needed, where there's a lot of truck volumes going into West Central or Eighth. Some of those different areas that will have pedestrian facilities going, you know, all the way to Eighth on the east side and even further north on the west. And then take, you know, some people would see the layout, what it might look like from a lane configuration top down, and then a kind of a conceptual typical section of what that three-lane section looks like with some of the setbacks and the right of way that we're looking at. So we stepped through the project, looking at each of those segments, you know, working our way south. Probably one of the more interesting things we're going to talk about is, you know, between the signals. And so we're talking about the issues that we have there, very wide driving lanes, our proposed improvements, looking at narrowing those lanes, but maintaining parking. We'll get through, you know, and talk about the intersections in a little bit. But again, just kind of showing the public, again, talking about what we're dealing with, what we're proposed, what the issues are with parking, access pedestrians, all of those things. You know, again, looking at the typical sections, once we narrow those lanes, we've got a lot of more walkability and space for pedestrians in front of the businesses there. And then we'll go into a little bit more detail because certainly, you know, at least in this layout, we can see that we at least show at this concept, those mini roundabouts that we've talked about. And so we'll talk about those two intersections in a little bit more detail, what the existing conditions look like, and then talk about our three proposed options, which is, you know, the same intersection that they have today without the turn lanes. Maximizes the amount of available parking, you know, a signalized intersection with left turn lanes, certainly better traffic improvements, but really impacts parking. And then also looking at the concept of mini roundabouts, which may be a little bit new to people, not as familiar. So, you know, we can talk a little bit more in depth. I will have an embedded video from the MINDOT project in St. James where they installed two mini roundabouts. And this is on your city website. All that, in fact, I grabbed this link right from there, which shows, you know, the trucks navigating through these mini roundabouts and just explaining how they work, on how, you know, the larger vehicles, they traverse right over the top, smaller vehicles, small trucks, they'll operate in this roundabout as they would in a conventional roundabout. But, you know, trying to necessarily head off the questions on, on how trucks would navigate is certainly, you know, similar to what's going on in St. James, Pelican Rapids. It's the intersection of two-truck highways. You've got a lot of heavy vehicle traffic. And then a little bit later on in the presentation, at the public info meeting, our traffic engineer, Joel Fabregas, will put video on that and then move through the rest of, I guess, the segments of the project, whether it's 59 or 108 and some of the whole improvements. So I'll pause. Said a lot there very quickly. Any questions on at least, I'd say, the proposed improvement aspect? I'll still talk about kind of what we're going to talk about from a traffic standpoint in a minute. But I wanted to see from how we're presenting the improvements, going from existing conditions to what's proposed to kind of the concept itself, if, if that seems like what you guys were looking for as well. While I'm hearing none, I'll keep going. So once we get through both the 59 corridor and 108, and like I said, it's a big corridor, so there's a lot of slides. So, you know, we start on the west side and then go to the east, finishing up at Ham Lane, talking about all the improvements throughout the corridor and what the configuration is. So we've broken it up, showed the detail of each section, and then kind of give a high-level describing things that might be of interest, like where proposed sidewalk or shared use paths are going to be now along the corridor, as indicated, how far in each direction. In the same manner, then talk about parking for on-street parking locations because what's proposed now in this first cut is a modification of that. That three-lane section, for the most part, does not have parking on the west side except through the downtown area. So we want to make sure people understand the differences or changes that at least are being proposed so that they can understand it and provide feedback if they'd like. All about that, then we're going to give kind of another high-level summary of kind of the intersection, the traffic, and operational analysis. And this is a little bit tricky because it can be very technical and we want to avoid a lot of jargon and things like that. But explain in a way some of the safety benefits or, or the differences between the intersection types, because that's really what the options are. We can talk about the typical sections throughout the corridor and lanes and parking, and, and that's all fine. And we'll get good feedback. Differences on how these operate, the pros and cons, the intersection of the north side, talk about, you know, what some of the issues are at 108 and 59. And then talk about the operational differences, the cost differences between mini roundabouts and signals, as well as then parking impacts, another, another thing that we certainly want to discuss because we're going to add left turn lanes. This kind of shows the loss of parking for the different configurations, whether we have mini roundabouts or left turn lanes, kind of showing and describing the number of spaces that would potentially be lost in, in different scenarios. So we want to highlight those so people can understand that they have pros and cons. There's certainly benefits and impacts from anything that's chosen. And then going into probably a little bit of detail as far as the operations, delays, things like that between the different operations, how far traffic, you know, backs up or queues at the signals, you know, during different things. So kind of a, a good summary, you know, he provides kind of at the end, describing between the different 108 alternatives, traffic during the operations during summer traffic, you know, how things will flow for, for different things and what's going to be an acceptable level of service, things like that, if there's safety benefits, different elements like that. So we'll describe that in a little bit, certainly more detail for the public meeting. And then after we get done with traffic, that essentially kind of wraps up. The presentation part describes the proposed improvements. I'll reiterate again, the, you know, the next steps and what people can expect moving forward. We'll be completing the layout, finalizing the details that they saw today based on feedback from, not only the public, but stakeholders, certainly the city council, you know, leading up to municipal consent, taking that, finalizing it, coming back for a public hearing to get to that municipal consent so we can start final design and then working towards construction starting in the spring of 2024. And that's, that's at least at a high level of, of what we plan to present. I know I've certainly rushed through a lot of that, but I would love to answer any questions that you guys have about what's going to be coming next week.
Anyone have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I'm glad to see that you're presenting both negatives and positives of some of these different scenarios on this. So I think that'll be very helpful.
No, certainly. We want to give everyone the whole picture. I mean, like I said, every, every decision has some sort of ramifications, benefits that just need to be described so we can make the best decision for the project.
Any other questions?
Travis, you know, I'm opposed to the minis and you can, you have $750,000 for programming in the left lanes, right?
I'll let you hear.
Blows me away.
Back at it. We just, Joe, just, yes. Essentially, the, the bill cost for signals because, you know, the whole intersection's going to get reconstructed. And so the pavement costs are going to be very similar between either a signalized intersection or a mini roundabout. And, but the actual installation of new signals and the operation of them are, are an additional cost. And, you know, when you look at that, it's, it's not like the Cassinai intersection. When we look at that, this roundabout would certainly be more expensive than the conventional intersection. This one isn't planned to be signalized. It doesn't warrant it. It'll operate fine just with stop control off Cassinai. You know, the roundabout has some different safety benefits. Certainly comes more property impacts and more cost. When we look at mini roundabouts, it's certainly just, it's a little bit different scenario just because they are intended to fit within that existing kind of pavement footprint that we have. But you don't have the additional expense, which can be quite significant on a new signal system.
I mean, I'm repeating myself, but I just cannot believe we could not signalize the existing lights that are down there. I just, I'll never be convinced. Sorry.
Any other questions? Any other questions from anyone?
Any other questions from anyone? I see it on here, Travis.
What was that?
I see no questions on this end.
Okay. Very good. Well, thank you, guys, and hopefully some good attendance next week. I appreciate the opportunity to give you guys a preview.
Okay, thank you, Travis, Tom, and staff. Appreciate your time.
I think, Matt, I also want to add one more thing here quickly. Like Travis, Matt, you know that we're right in the middle of our project development phase. There's a lot of things coming up in the next couple of months here, which will definitely be involved with the city. You know, we have our public meeting here next week. In mid-April, we have what we call a bioengineering study being done. What that is, is basically set, you know, it's statutory, set. Every project is this large, basically 420 million dollars, that we have to hire independent reviewers to come in, look at the project. So basically, in early, mid-April, we'll have a team of up and above coming in from all the states, as well as independent fresh eyes who look at this project to kind of look at our design, see if they can make any improvements, things to add down into the project. So that'll be happening in April. And probably Charlie Apple is heading on our layout for review down in the state wide for our second office to look at it. Long story short, by next January, we'll be finalized. We'll have, we have the intersection's design, what the city wants, what Mid-Back wants, what we all want, what we want. All our lanes selected, we'll have our parking lanes selected, we'll have our production features all selected, our own, both of the methods will be ironed out by the end of January. So it'll be now and then, a lot of it will happen in the background, with our designing teams, all of our monthly meetings, the work due issues. You know, a big part of all this is the cost. That's going to come down to what Mid-Back's been paying for, what the city will pay for. They'll help determine, you know, where we add sidewalks, where we add tricky paths, where we do everything, how can double cost at the end. There'll be a lot of interaction between Mid-Back and the city and the county, because the county, I know, is a big piece of that part, all goes well. So by the end of next January, all this is going to be finalized. Our final day will be approved, hopefully, with our high-level cost estimate. And then Travis, who's had the hard work, I keep trying to make everything, you know, designing is hard. I mean, to make everything work, you know, it's a real challenge for him. So, and we have to keep moving forward. You know, it breaks out so far. I think that will keep going forward, I'm not too concerned about that. But they choose those that come to our monthly PNTs. Those are really great for resource sharing. And if you have any questions at all, please feel free to reach out to myself. You know, John, I have my number, I'm sure Brent does, too, we can walk through issues. You know, but we need to say to be at more of a Mid-Back. As to the same, the partnership project that we're working together on. You know, it's done great so far, and just going to make sure I keep going forward. So any questions whatsoever, please reach out and contact me. So there you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
You, too. We'll go down to item number seven, a commercial kitchen discussion. As you recall, our last city council meeting, we briefly touched on this. And there was a concept or the idea of possibly utilizing the kitchen space at the senior citizens center for a commercial kitchen for the community. And we just sat here as a council, and we didn't have input from senior citizens center. So we invited this evening Gloria Rapke. She's the president of this Pelican Rapids Senior Citizens Center. Dottie Eady, she's on the board of directors. And Gerald Grefschud, who has worn many hats. I don't know what your official title is. No, Gerald, but you've worn them all.
Advisor.
Advisor.
He is a former president, a former.
So I guess we were open for discussion. And Kuzman Ballard, did you have any, you had questions on this to begin with? Do you have any questions for the senior citizen board at this time?
I don't have any, no, I don't have any.
I have a presentation if I could do it.
Yes, if you could use the microphone, Gloria.
Do you want me to my mask off? So you can hear me better?
Yeah, please.
Well, I guess you introduced us, and I just was going to say Gerald and Dottie and I are here representing the senior center. And we thank you for the invitation to speak to the city council. Kathy Sunbee, the cook at the senior center, is on a well-earned vacation for a few days, and she is in agreement with our decision. Back in 1974, a group of seniors shared the goal of forming a senior center. With a startup gift of $5,000 from the city, they were able to borrow money to build the senior center and land donated by the city. Over 50 people were forming the senior citizen club at that time. Even in 2003 to 2006, when I worked at it there as a site manager, hired by Nutrition Services Incorporated, hereafter I'll be calling them NSI, we averaged 25 to 30 people coming on a daily basis. Part of my job was to encourage attendance. NSI decided to eliminate that position after I resigned. And NSI is owned by Larry Kroger out of Wasika, Minnesota. At that time, Wednesdays brought whist players to eat and to play whist in the afternoon, a total of six tables of whist. Whist players came on Friday nights, too. I arranged music, entertainment, at least one day a week before the meal, but times have changed. People followed other entertainment, and we began a gradual decline in attendance. All this while the senior center has been a rental location for graduation and birthday parties, weddings, dances, even Sunday church services. During that timeframe, the senior center was gifted a sizable amount through the will of a member of the senior center. Even during this pandemic, with no rentals, we have been able to pay the utility bills, and NSI pays the monthly rent. And with less than sales in November and December, we have drawn minimal dollar amounts from savings. You may question why we haven't applied for COVID funding. Rentals have never been a sure source of income for us. How do you prove lost or unforeseen rental money? After contacting our membership, we are in agreement that we should gift the senior center building to the city of Pelican Rapids. The article in the corporation dated October 25th, 1976 reads as follows. "Any assets belonging to the corporation at the time of dissolution shall be distributed to the city of Pelican Rapids for nonprofit purposes." It's not that we're gifting you with a dead horse, since you will be receiving the CDs and the saving account. Our roof was replaced in 2006. We all know that they don't last forever. But just letting you know that it was done in 2006, a complete roof was done then. We have received funding from United Way in our report to United Way the end of December 2020. And as I showed, we had prepared 10,358 meals from January to December in 2020. These were all delivered and were picked up by individuals. In my discussions with NSI's representative, NSI wants to continue offering meals from the senior center. The two freezers, the two refrigerators, and new dishwasher, just this last spring now, are NSI property. To protect their food from disappearing from the pantry, where the freezers are located, would need to be locked when used for commercial food preparation. To comply with commercial kitchen requirements, the cupboards would be replaced with stainless steel shelving. The range and the convection oven would need to be replaced, but not by NSI. I'm sure you know that the city of Fergus Falls owns the building the senior citizens are in. I'm not sure who owns the exercise equipment they use. Our request would be that NSI could continue providing onsite meals, as well as meals on wheels. And as I has agreed to do that. I might add that anyone who can eat there, even you guys, though they aren't citizens, senior citizens, you pay $7 rather than $4 for a healthy, well-balanced meal, be certain beverage included. For the past several years, we have worked in partnership with folks, allowing them to use the facility without charging them rent for their appreciation events, bake sales, and so forth. Oaks, in my opinion, is the best asset Pelican Rapids has for the senior population. They have promoted bingo and bongo and brought people to the center. The last concern we have is where meals could be prepared while the kitchen is being remodeled. But I guess that's your problem. That's all I have to say. Do you have any questions? The last time when we did replace the counters down there, we were able to work out of the VFW. But that is not an option now because of them having a restaurant there.
Well, you were talking about paying bills and then paying rent, I thought you said. Did you say that? Paying rent? No?
Oh, NSI pays rent.
Oh, okay.
They pay us a certain amount each month for being there.
Okay, thanks.
So that pays some of our bills.
Yeah.
But we do have electricity. And, you know, when you have a commercial kitchen, that'll involve more electricity for us. We have a wall air conditioner. I could see the dollar signs going up in the summertime, even with us, with Kathy in there.
So would you clarify your wishes?
We want to give you back the senior center.
And?
And you would have all the responsibility for the bills. You'd have the water, you'd have electricity, heat.
Would your wish is for it to keep serving as it is?
Yes, we would like to be able to come down there and eat. And as I has agreed to that.
And continued as a meals-on-wheels hub.
Right. And you see, you know, we did 10,000 meals.
I delivered from there to residents.
So I think, you know, even a year of pandemic, 10,000 meals is a lot of meals.
So Gloria, who was part of this decision?
We have called the membership.
Because the first I've heard of it.
I know.
And I said on the board.
But everybody else was called. We didn't want you to get all uptight about it.
We ought to start keeping more stuff from Brett.
Brett knows how much is in the CDs and in the, I haven't divulged that.
But he knows that?
What's that?
You know that?
What?
The CDs?
Yeah, yeah.
Don, do we, what? I don't know what to think, because my first question is basically some, what I'm hearing is there's a corporation or board that oversees and runs the senior center. And you guys want to dissolve all of that and basically stop you guys running the senior center. Now the city, just give it to the city, give it to the city, and the city can just continue to do what the seniors have always done down there. Instead of a board running it, now it becomes a new department of the city. I don't, without thinking about it and looking at it and what this all means, I don't know what to say.
We didn't expect that.
That's what your bylaws says, but is the city council obligated to say, okay, we'll take it?
Well, can you not accept a gift?
Sure, yes, all the time. They have the option to take a gift or not take a gift. But in this case, I don't know.
Right, like, yeah, like I said, we were in the very infancy of any discussion on that. They wanted to include the senior center. We didn't expect you to come in and say, here, you can have it.
Well, I'll tell you what, you know, last fall, no, last, yeah, it was last July or August, the park board came to us, and they wanted to change our bathroom situation. They wanted to put doors on the outside to come into the bathroom. And NSI opposed that because of all of their equipment in there.
Well, that was a discussion the park board had. The city council had never heard anything about it. I hadn't heard anything about it.
But I mean, here we're coming bombarded by all angles. And hey, let's give it to them. They can do whatever they want.
I guess this is probably something we're going to have to discuss and couldn't make a decision this evening.
But very helpful to know whether senior center, what you feel about it.
I just want to point out, in this agreement that we were given, I mean, this is the original agreement signed in 1976 by Roland Hughesby.
Was the mayor then?
And then it was another agreement dated 18 May '78, signed by Bob Berquist. And on item or point six of that, it's, the very last sentence says, "In the event the corporation shall dissolve," which is, I'm assuming you're dissolving your corporation.
Well, that's basically what it says.
"In the event the corporation shall dissolve, the senior citizens shall convey said real estate and building back to the city." So it's already been, hasn't that already been decided? That it's, that they can give it back to us? And, I mean, it's technically ours that they're just giving or returning.
Based on what you just read and what they presented tonight, that could be the outcome? Yeah? By what you just read, that would, if they're dissolving, it would come back to the city just automatically? Yeah, sure.
But at that point, the city is not obligated to continue any type of operations down there. And I think a lot of the operations that are going on down there are very important to the city.
But you're not really talking about dissolving, are you?
Yeah.
No, not really. We would just like to have the city take it over, bills included. You know, Fergus owns the senior center building.
The city owns the building?
Yes.
So then let me ask the question, based on what you just said then. How do you guys, as a board, if you're not dissolving, how do you guys see yourself playing a role in what happens down there?
Well, we would like to be able to come down there and eat and have NSI control, keep on serving food from there.
But are you looking at any managerial positions?
No.
So you are dissolving the board?
Yeah.
Well, basically, yes.
If we'll take the building back, presumably.
Right.
You just assume have the board dissolved?
Well, we would like to have bake sales and maybe something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Ongoing use of, but under the city's umbrella.
So is this something that we need to have Greg look at? Or is it something?
I think we need to have a lot of discussion.
Yeah, I do, too.
On how we make this work.
Because I don't know how many hours this is going to. Because I'm kind of thinking that initially, what's going to have to happen is there's going to be, have to show some action by their board saying they're dissolved. And based on the agreement, we're giving the property back to the city. And then how that property is used after that, there needs to be that discussion.
So we're going to do?
Do we need to hire employees?
Yeah.
NSI, the cook is hired by NSI. We have nothing to do with her salary.
So now we've got a facility that basically, the city has, the functions that go on down there, the way you guys were renting it out for use by others, birthday parties, wedding, all that stuff, that's no longer them. That's the city now. So we have to have, in a sense, we're going to be establishing a
Community center.
A community center, yeah. That can be rented off, potentially used by other people, and how that, and so it's not NSI that'll be overseeing that, it will be city staff.
Right.
NSI doesn't currently oversee the function of the place, just the staff, correct? They don't oversee, like, if there's a birthday party, we'll say, scheduled for down there. NSI doesn't, they don't have anything to do with that.
Kathy, Kathy, the cook, arranges that.
Just because she's available.
Right.
Yes, but NSI doesn't have anything to do with that, except for position.
All NSI does is prepare the food. They purchased the freezers, or I'm assuming, to store that. And then they, did they, are they the servers when it's, when you had in-house CD?
No, 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 it's just within our own group, you know.
There's lots of avenues of discussion here.
Oh, absolutely, because they'll prepare the food, but what happens after that point? What happens when somebody wants? It is really basically just setting up a structure for a community center.
Exactly.
Which we have nothing in place for.
Right. If we accept this gift, are we gonna need a legal, are we gonna need a legal document from them?
I think, based on what he just read, and we can get Greg's opinion, but I think is, if they presented something to the council saying, the senior center board is dissolving, based on this agreement, we are giving you the center back, it's yours. It's what you do with it after that is totally up to you guys. If you want to continue the food programs, if you want to continue the, you know, the events that happened down there, it's gonna be establishing that whole criteria. But I think to kick it off, based on what Kevin read, I think it's just them guys presenting a letter signed by the board, signed by whoever, that is dissolving and we are giving the facility back to the city. I don't know that the city can say no. I think they just do that, but I think it's some type of formal, written communication to the city that says, here's what we're doing. We're dissolved, here's your property.
Yes, that's what we're saying, yes.
Gloria, this is the last thing I thought you would say tonight. So this is a lot to think about. So we need time. And then, what would it cost the city to keep doing what you're doing? Just, do you have any ballpark idea? I mean, because that's what we're dealing with, is costs and potential increased taxes.
When does the board meet? Just to interrupt.
We meet the second Monday.
I suppose I can ask you that. Second Monday of the month, every month?
There will be staffing issues clearly, especially if it's a community center, because there has to be cleaning staff and maintenance.
Well, Kathy has been doing that. And the cook.
And she's paid by NSI?
Is that part of the NSI?
No, we pay her for
No, no, no. She does that, is that under her umbrella to do that?
No, 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 no.
But they pay her, so, I mean, somebody has to pay her, like the city, is what I'm saying. It would be like another city employee position.
Right, right.
I mean, community center's been kept around.
I'm going to read you
A long time.
The article eight, that's written in our, upon dissolution of the corporation, no parts of the assets shall be distributed to incorporators or members thereof. Any assets belonging to the corporation at the time of dissolution shall be distributed to the city of Pelican Rapids for nonprofit purposes. And that was dated October 25th, 1976. In the agreement we have with the city of Pelican Rapids, I've just taken number six out of it, I had it rest. In the event the senior citizens shall cease to provide said recreational or social program or fail to pay the costs thereof, in the event the senior citizens shall fail to pay expenses incurred by the corporation, including expenses of building and operating said building, or in the event the corporation shall dissolve, senior citizens shall convey said real estate and building back to the city.
And that's virtually what's in the agreement that Kevin
Right, same thing. It's the exact highlighted number six, yep.
But do you have a number like you could throw at us? Like, what would it cost us per year just to keep doing what you're doing?
And you'll operate
That's what I'm after.
Well.
So you're talking electricity and water?
Yeah.
Right.
What would it cost the city?
Telephone, you've got, we had 420 some dollars, both 2019 and 2020. The gas for the furnace was 811 and 20, 895 in 19. Water and sewer was 567 and 20, 549 in 19. Electricity was $2,965 in 2020. In 2019, it was $2,818. Waste and garbage was $529 in 2020, $906 in 19. We had to replace the sign this last year for $400. Cleaning, we've not had a lot of cleaning this year because of, you know, nobody being in there, basically. $345, $700 the year before, 19. And we've been members of the chamber and that's a $50 due. Pest control is $300 both years. Insurance, that's a big one. They did lower it this year for us, I suppose, because we didn't have any rental, you know, they didn't expect that. It was $1,472. Last year it was $1,565.
Gloria, not to interrupt, but it looks like $10,000 in roughly, right?
I haven't added them up, no.
But I mean, that's kinda
Basically.
Well, yeah, that's kinda what I'm seeing, so.
What were the revenues from the NIS?
They pay us $300 a month.
Okay.
And Mayor, would Donnie or Gerald have anything down?
Well, I would just say that
Carol, do you want to use the microphones, they can hear you on camera?
Yeah. To me, it would be just a lot simpler for the city to own the building and do the meeting, scientists. I think it's very tough for, to get people to wanna be involved with, even with the board. They want the place open, but they don't want to really get involved.
That's everything now. When you were last open for in-house dining or whatever, what were your number, I mean, were you averaging?
We have not many dining indoors, except if we have special music, which we try to do once a month. And then we'll draw maybe 25, 30 people. That music situation has changed a lot since I worked there. I mean, people were willing to come and do music for nothing. And now we do pay the Bruce Nielsen and his group. I guess he's called different names. But you know who I mean. It's Richard Jensen and Pauline.
Donnie, can you not, do you have anything to add? No?
I didn't say it wrong.
All right, thanks.
Donnie was the secretary, traded to now. Iris Omen couldn't be here tonight, but she's the secretary.
Well, you can see, we're a little surprised.
That's what we wanted to do.
You accomplished your mission.
Well, I guess, based on the agreement, at your next board meeting, if this is what you wanted to do, you would have to formally
Yeah, I think for starters, at the next board meeting, when you talk about corporation, it's corporation and the board, are they the same?
Yeah, I would say that.
Okay. At your next meeting, I think you should just take an action, you know, approve second vote or whatever. So your minutes show that you have voted to dissolve the board and turn the property back to the city. And then, and then, once they do that, then we can take and that with the agreements there and just touch base with Greg. Because the next step would be using Attorney Larson anyway to convey the property back.
The board meets on the 12th, our city council meeting the next day, so we wouldn't want to talk about it that soon because they'd have to go through the Attorney Larson.
Yeah, they can just, on their next meeting, on the Monday, they can just take the action and then just make sure they get a copy of those minutes or whatever up to me and then I'll get with Greg. And then the following council meeting, not the next night, but the following one, we'll have it on the agenda, the last council meeting.
27th. So would they dissolve somewhere near then, like a dissolution date?
Well, this commercial kitchen then would be in your hands instead of ours.
I mean, do we even know who to talk to as far as the people that are providing the meals and how we go about that? And if it could remain uninterrupted, it'd be nice.
I think once they, yeah, they can just basically, once they provide that to us, just let us know who their contact is and we can contact them and just make sure that continues on.
Tracy Ellenbaum is the coordinator for NSI. She's out of Morehead. She's a very fine person to work with.
Yeah.
She was working there when I was working there.
We'll just make sure we get her information, contact information, and we just let her know that even though you guys are dissolving it, you know, just, we don't want to have any hiccups in that, in that program. Now, let's just continue to do it and we'll just be the contact now instead of you guys.
Right.
Isn't it a commercial kitchen now?
No, no, it is not.
And what you were talking about, the upgrades that we'll take probably?
Yeah, it would involve replacing everything with stainless steel.
Yeah, okay.
And
Is there currently a hood in there, you know, a conduction hood?
Yep.
Any other questions?
Well, she read her statement.
Any other questions?
Sorry for the surprise.
And Brett somewhere.
Well, that was very good to see.
That was good to Brian.
That's the first time he's been speaking to us in four years.
Well, we didn't find him last year, the board did, because, you know, we weren't meeting, we annually have a meeting with all of the people who paid their dues, who are actually members. And so, you know, we did it by phone.
So how many members do you, members do you have now?
I don't have a list right with me, but I have it in the car.
I would say it's about 30. But, you know, we just asked by word of mouth, would you like to be a member? For $10? Yeah, I can throw $10 in.
Don, I want you to say that, as long as I had you here, instead of having to get on here later, who has keys to that building down there?
Well, that's a bit of a contention for me. We did change the locks, I suppose it's two years ago. Because, you know, whenever anybody rented, anybody can go to the hardware store and make duplicates. And so we changed the locks. And that, at that time, I told Kathy, we said, we're gonna control those keys more now. And, and we have, I think, to a certain degree, but like you say, I'm not sure how we all has keys.
Maybe we'll have to rekey them. Once we get all this, yeah, we'll have to do that.
But how do you rent a place? You know, they have to have a key to get in. We don't have a janitor there to come in and lock it up. That would be an added expense.
That's something we're gonna have to figure out.
That would be simple for you guys, because you could give the police department the key and they could open and make sure it's locked up after.
They'll love that.
We'll see how that goes.
You know, we've had some problems, basically, when you think how much we have rented it, we really haven't had too much trouble with people leaving it, they're supposed to leave it as they find it. And if they don't, they don't get their deposit back. And, you know, there's been times when I've gotten involved and, I mean, I got somebody real upset with me, said I didn't give them this deposit back. I said, because it's supposed to be left as clean as you found it. And when I got there that Monday morning, my feet stuck to the floor. And I don't call that as you found it. Well, I'm never gonna rent that place again. I said, thank you.
There was more of a comment, you know, Kurt mentioned it. We've been talking about a community center in Pelican for quite a while. We almost got there with the upstairs, but, so, these are things that we would have all had to think about and put into place had we got to that community center and now they're giving us one. So at least, you know, Harvard can be used for that. So the things that would have had to been put in place, had we done a community center, are just gonna have to be put in place as soon as we possibly can do it.
Thursday.
Okay, I know, we can wait till they get back with the letter that says they're dissolving and they're gonna do this.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
What's that, what's that statement? Be careful of free gifts.
Such a thing as a free lunch?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for hearing us.
Bye, Ryan.
Thank you. We'll talk again.
May I take one of these council letters?
Sure. Okay, moving on. Item number 10, resolution 2021-04, accepting monetary limits, accepting monetary, accepting monetary limits on municipal tort liability. There was a copy in your packet. Danielle, is there a speech to this?
Yeah, this is, I have to pass this resolution every year when we read, knew our property and casualty insurance for the city. And so, we've passed it every year. That's all I really
I move to a resolution 2021-4.
Second.
I'm Terry Lowes.
Okay, we have motion after second, discussion?
What is, what are the limits?
The state basically sets, the League of Minnesota City states, states, sets the statutory limits when it comes to tort liabilities. And it might be, I think it's something like $250,000 per event, up to a max of so much. And cities can choose to say, no, we're gonna waive them, we're gonna go higher, and set, you know, set their own limits. And that's what we basically do every year, is we say, no, we're not gonna go higher than what the state requires. And so, I think it's like 250,000 per person, per event, up to dollars or whatever. And we're saying, we're staying with that, we're not gonna pay 500 per event.
Right, yeah.
Any other questions? Questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried. Item number 11, in your packet is court minutes. Any comments on those? Any comments? Item number 12 is pool committee minutes, which are also in your packet. Open for comments. Hearing none. We'll go to item number 16, local board of appeals and equalization meeting, and Danielle's gonna throw a surprise at us.
No.
So, the local board of appeals and equalization meeting is scheduled for Thursday?
Yes.
Between 2:00 and 3:00. The county was not able to get the notices out in time, and so, we have to reschedule that meeting, but we still have to have that meeting. So I need a quorum of council members here on Tuesday, so we can start the meeting and then recess it to the newly scheduled meeting date.
I can be here.
You could be here?
Yep.
You can be here? You're not here.
Say that again. Quorum?
Yes.
On Tuesday?
On Thursday.
This Thursday.
Two o'clock.
April 8th. She said Tuesday.
Yeah.
But now I'm really confused.
This Thursday at 2:00, she needs three of you here.
Yes.
I won't be here.
The normally scheduled meeting that we were gonna have?
Yeah.
At the 8th at?
Well, we still need a quorum for that.
The first, yeah.
Just to come in and change the meeting.
Right. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so, so now we're gonna have
So do you have a quorum?
I have two.
It's gonna be five minutes?
Yes.
That's it.
I just know that Kevin's not gonna be here, so if four of you are here, if three of you are here, I just need
Well, it sounds like we're gonna be here.
So you're gonna be here.
Yeah, you know what, I mean, yeah.
Does it already give a new date yet?
Well, so
That's where she's going.
Oh.
So then we have rescheduled, so you may see it in the paper coming out saying it's the 12th. It's not gonna be the 12th now, that didn't work either. So now we're going with, I believe, because the mayor's gone, we will do the 22nd from 2:00 to 3:00. That's a Thursday.
And that's the one that they gave you?
They said they could make that work, yes. 22nd.
April 27th.
2:00.
Yes.
Okay.
And that would be the whole hour.
Everybody, where is the bell?
See you on Thursday at 2:00.
That's a funny Oh, okay. Let's not worry about 22nd.
Why can't we do that from here, right now?
What do you mean? Do
Said, coming in here on Thursday, why can't we do it right here, right
The county has to be a part of it, and since it was already scheduled for that day, we have to have something on that day.
Then here.
And they have to come?
They're gonna zoom in.
Yeah, they're gonna zoom in.
Okay, any other questions?
I'm gonna call.
Okay, moving on. Item number thirteen, city administrator report.
Since the last meeting, I had a department head meeting and also working to set this agenda and get ready for the meeting. I met with a business owner regarding potential business relocation, still working on that. Also, I've had several conversations with the realtor regarding Southwest parcels for housing, so just sharing a lot of information back and forth, helping figure out how to split up or get things in place, so that the person that owns those lots down there can start selling them, making sure they're the right size for single-family homes, so they meet our ordinances and that type of thing. And I think they've got everything worked out to the point where they know now, because everything was in twenty-five-foot lot sizes, as opposed to the seventy-five or whatever they need to put a house on, so they got all that ironed out, and I think they've started selling. I know they've sold at least one or two. Continue to work on the city website and continue to add information as we get it for, whether it's the compliance steering committee information or MinDOT's 2024 project. At the end of the 2024 project monthly meeting, I ended up being the one working on, with a little bit of help from Amy and Kate, on this DNR outdoor recreation grant application, which I hope to have it done and submitted tomorrow. That's the deadline for it. Also worked on the police department issues and other city personnel issues that we had to, utilizing the city labor attorneys, we continue to work on stuff there. Also held the police department personnel interviews. I attended a Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities virtual meeting surrounding public safety fitness for duty. That is becoming a big thing, both physical and mental, physical fitness for specifically police officers, but it also does basically affect firefighters, whether they're fully staffed or volunteer firefighters. So there's programs that the league is doing that has more to do with the program they're putting in place, has more to do with doing physical fitness evaluations of applicants for positions to be hired, but just generally, mental physical, or mental fitness of police officers becoming a big, big deal. You're gonna hear more about. Also attended a virtual meeting with Otterill County's Community Development Agency regarding community growth, and the things that they're working on that, you know, that pertain around that build, big build project that the county's working on, trying to get five thousand new households in Otterill County. Obviously, we're playing a role in that with some of the things we've done. That list of sixty-some vacant lots in Pelican Rapids that I put together, we've since figured out who on those, on that list gets, is in our utility billing system and who's not. We've generated addresses for every single one of these, and we've mailed them a flyer that was as part of this big build, just letting them know, all of them, that, you know, we understand you have a vacant lot. That lot potentially could have a house on it. So here's some information to get you to start thinking about, if you're interested in selling it, if you're interested in putting a house on it yourself, the county has a program, the city has a program. With these two programs, you would have, you know, up to ten thousand dollars with the tax abatement to put a house on it. So it's getting the information out there specifically to these people that own sixty lots. Then I also attended a League of Minnesota City virtual meeting around the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. This is the new stimulus package, two trillion dollar stimulus package. The city, we haven't had official word of it yet, but it, right now, it's looking like the city of Pelican Rapids is gonna get two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars on top of the hundred-and-ninety we already spent or tried to spend. So we gotta figure out what we're gonna do once we get that notice and that money, what we're gonna do, two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars. So we're doing all kinds of brainstorming.
New communities.
Yeah, I don't know. You know, I'll tell you what, yeah, that's something to think about. We gotta think big on this one, because we had a hard time figuring out where to put one-hundred-and-ninety thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety thousand. And a lot of it, too, is, under that other one, what was very helpful was that the county was already putting things in place to establish, you know, loan programs and grant programs for small businesses and nonprofits. And that was a huge help for us spending that hundred and ninety, or, you know, ninety thousand over there. They don't know that they can be a part of this one. And if they can, and we have to put those types of programs in place, we need to have staff, because we're already busy enough to have to put together guidelines and do all that and evaluate it and get the money out there. The county was huge with helping us, and we're hoping that they'll help us again. I reached out to them and asked them, are they gonna do it under this next stimulus package, and they aren't sure if they're going to be a part of that or not. But if they don't, that doesn't necessarily mean we have to throw money out to businesses and nonprofits. We can think of other ways of spending it, and we need to do that. So just to let you know that that's coming our way. That's my report.
Don, how many were not on the utility billing list, property owners?
Boy, I'll think, out of the sixty, I bet you, it was probably a third, if not more, forty percent that we had to come up with the addresses, because they didn't get utility bills from us, so they weren't in our system. There were people that, you know, lived in our communities, that owned property in town, or they owned property in town but just lived outside the city, so they didn't get a utility bill.
Did some have multiple lots, properties?
There was some of that.
Okay, thanks. And do you remember if, on that list, did that list include the property that, like the Grabarkowitz over by OK Tire across the road that they tore down and they kinda, did they get, they gave that to the city?
No, that's the city's property, no.
Right, but is that included in that list?
That's not on that list, because that's not a buildable lot.
But there's two lots there, isn't there?
Well, there's probably more than that there, but where their house stood was not on that list, because that's not a buildable lot. They had a house on there, and they had a garage on there, but for somebody to put one on there now, I don't know, it's pretty soft over there in a lot of places, I don't know how big a house is.
No, I'm talking about the, not the one down by the river, I'm talking the one...
Oh, the stone wall. Oh, that one over there. Yes, that, well, shoot, boy, I'd have to go back and look. I just, I don't remember sending Mr. Grabarkowitz a letter. I have to look and see, I don't anymore, no.
My nephew...
Didn't he give that to us?
No, he gave us, he gave us down by the river. That one over there, I think he still has, unless he sold it to a neighbor.
I think he did.
Which is possible.
Where are you talking about?
The old... Big, the stone rotating wall that's there?
Yeah, by Johnson's, or right across...
Yeah, across from Johnson's.
Across from Steve's, a few blocks.
In that same block.
Yeah.
Right across from Pop Thompson's.
That house was torn down, and now there's a bare lot there.
Yeah, that's why I was saying, there's like two lots, right? There's kind of a, each of them are actually probably a half lot.
And to be honest with you, Kevin, I don't, I don't think that that one was included, because I don't think it's, I don't think it's buildable because of its size. It doesn't meet the minimum requirement.
Okay, any other questions for Don?
Thank you.
Don, thank you. Item number fourteen, mayor's report, a few things in the last few weeks. Attended a 2024 district steering committee meeting with Don. That was by Microsoft Team Technology, which Tom uses this evening. Attended a local foods, local places steering committee meeting this past week. Visited with Terry Gamble of People Service regarding water and lagoon operations. Attended the webinar Don talked about and the new stimulus package for cities. Attended Pelican Rapids Fireman's Relief Association meeting with Danielle on the March sixteenth. Conducted, or part of the conjunction of the three interviews for Pelican Rapids Police Patrol Officers. Visited by telephone with Gloria Raffke regarding a commercial kitchen. Invited her to this evening. Visited by telephone with Amanda Hillman regarding the DNR's next meeting regarding the status of the Pelican River Restoration Project. Met with the postmaster, the local post office here regarding the river restoration project and any impacts on the post office lot, which there are not, and her concern was just that there would be, the parking lot would be open during the construction time, so they could get delivery trucks in and out, which will be no problem. Last three weeks, visited with several Pelican Rapids businesses downtown, and also met on Monday with Administrator Soga to review the agenda for this evening's council meeting. Any questions?
So what's the status of this river restoration project?
We're gonna have another meeting coming up, when done? Monday? No.
No, I think it's like the twelfth of April.
Yeah.
We'll...
Twelfth of April.
Probably have something on the next agenda just to announce it.
Yeah.
Well, our meeting is the twelfth of April, isn't it?
Is it?
Our meeting's thirteenth.
Okay. Let me see, I don't know if I have it in my calendar yet, because I just...
Houston Engineering did some whirrings, you know?
The twelfth is a...
When the ice was on the river, and they're gonna bring us some technical field work they done, and that's what we'll learn at that point.
So is the project gonna go ahead this year or not?
That's what we're gonna be talking about. I think they've got all the information now, so we can start having discussions about the project, what's gonna happen, what's gonna be taken out, what's gonna be put in, that type of thing.
Yeah, elevations.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay.
I move to adjourn.
Are you really? Motion second. All in favor, might be saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, meeting adjourned.
It's Wednesday, the fourteenth, at nine AM, the dam...
That's pretty topical for us.